Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, the CIC met at 8:30, and they have a recommendation for an application from Perry Fiberglass Products Incorporated for a $200,000 loan, 15 years, and a 2.65%. Rebecca, are you going to report to us their recommendation or is it on?
Rebecca Jones, Lorain County Community Development Department. Brian Barker of our department has been working with Mr. Pulliam of Perry Fiberglass for about the last 18 months. Mr. Pulliam called us in response to one of our radio ads, and so we were very excited that we've been able to bring this project to fruition. The company is asking for a $200,000 loan. It is a $541,000 project. They will be creating 15 new jobs and doubling the size of their facility from 10,000 square foot to 20,000 square foot. And they anticipate to have construction started within the next two to three months. Hopefully, it may be a little sooner if all this gets through the state quickly and rapidly. Mr. Pulliam is here from Perry Fiberglass and is more than willing to answer any questions or could give a brief presentation to the Commissioners if you so wish.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Pulliam, do you have comments to the board other than the Merry Christmas that you gave earlier?
For those who missed the Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas to everyone. We are a company that manufactures fiberglass reinforced plastic duct. We have been in business for 20 years. Just a little over a year ago, we relocated our offices from West Lake, Ohio to Avon Lake, Ohio. We're located on Penn Oak Parkway. Part of this move was brought about by our changing our approach. Up until a little over a year ago, we had used third-party sources to manufacture all of our products. We had decided to take on the manufacturing ourselves. We located a property in Avon Lake on Penn Oak that sufficed for our immediate needs to get started. However, we knew going in that with the growth that we were experiencing and taking over some of the manufacturing ourselves, that we would in fact need to expand that facility. The original phase, we self-financed and took on ourselves. To do the expansion, we need some help, and therefore, we approached the county, and the county development group have been very helpful and instrumental in getting us here. In doing so, we moved into Lorain County with three jobs. We immediately took it to five. We have now 15 employees, so we've gone from three to 15 in the period of a year. We would expect, over the course of the next three years, to double that again. And to date, all of our employees, except one, are in fact Lorain County residences.
Any questions?
None here.
I move that we approve the recommendation of the CIC.
Second.
Further discussion?
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
At 10:00 AM, Michael Chandler from Lorain County Chamber of Commerce and the Innovative Partnership in Lorain County would like to make a presentation to the board on providing a zero-interest loan to construct the dream house. At 3:00 PM, the County Planning Commission will be meeting here. Under resolutions, Job and Family Services bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye, with the exception of 21, 22.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated in the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorain County Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye, with the exception of number seven.
Award bid to Expedex in the amount of $105,370.59 for the copy paper, envelopes, and various paper products. From the Administration Building in Lorain County Department of Job and Family Services, bids were open on November 29, 2004, and will be effective January 1, 2005, through December 31, 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorize the salaries for Lorain and Elary Municipal Courts, effective January 1, 2005, reflecting the county's 2/5 share. Elaria Judge Lisa LaGrace, which is going to be the presiding administrative judge, by weekly rate, will be from $950 to $973, $973.08. Elary Judge John Munson, by weekly rate, from $973.07 to $950. Elary Clerk of Court, Donna Rothgary, by weekly rate, from $1,372.42 to $1,405.12. Lorain Clerk of Court, Stephen Bancek, by weekly rate, from $1,372.42 to $1,405.12.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve an enter into contract with Ohio Edison Company for the Efficiency, Safety, Innovative Program, effective January 1, 2005, expiring December 31, 2008. This contract is for all Mercury High Pressured Sodium or Metal Highly Energy Efficient Streetlights.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Children and Families, reject bids opened on December 6, 2004, and instruct the clerk to readvertise requests for proposals for Lorain County Children and Families Council bedding materials. This notice will be published in the Morning Journal on December 21 and 28, and bids will be open at 2:00 PM on January 4, 2005, with Commissioners' Public Care Room.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, what happened with the rebid? One?
We only received one proposal, and there was some problems with the bid specification, so it's just going back out so we can get more competitive bids with better specifications.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Community Development Department, appoint and reappoint various members of Lorain County Economic and Industrial Development Corporation. Appoint, filling terms effective January 1, 2005, that should be 5, no, December 31, 2006. Laura Kukowski, Commissioner-elect, replacing Commissioner Mary Jo Vacy. Ted Kallo, Commissioner-elect, replacing Commissioner David J. Moore. Dennis Will, Prosecutor-elect, replacing Prosecutor Gary Bennett. John Palazzo, Lorain County Airport, replacing Dan Abfold. Their alternate is Mike Barth. Reappoint, effective January 1, 2004, through December 31, 2007. Commissioner Blair, Auditor Mark Stewart, County Administrator Mr. Cortez, Patrick McAllen Doyle from Lorain County Chamber, Tom Ryan, retired, and Ronald Luth Whining, Director of Community Development Department.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorize an extension of time to R.A. Joseph Construction, Inc., Avon, Ohio, for the Columbia Township Elevator Project, to May 15, 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve an enter into software maintenance agreement for project accounting for contract system for the period of February 1, 2005, through December 31, 2005, at a cost of $1,588 to be paid from account 205010903, or 50101 contract services.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve an enter into agreement with Horizon's Activity Center, North Homestead, Ohio, in the amount not to exceed $500,000, to provide an after-school program to children ages 5 through 14, effective January 1, 2005, through June 30, 2005.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Transit, authorize the filing of applications with ODOT for FYO-5 Transportation Assistance Grants. These grants include the Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program and the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under CBCF, award various contracts for the additions and alterations to Lorain Medina Community Base Correctional Facility project. Bids were opened on October 21, and these were the lowest and most responsive complying with specifications. The contract award is contingent upon approval by the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections. When funds became available, they will be placed in account 203025401440701. An issued notice to proceed letters will be effective on or before January 3, 2005, and to be complete site contract on or before June 1, 2005. Authorize County Administrator and a fed county auditor to release retainage at completion of the project. For general trades, bid was Sites Builders, Inc., Broadview Heights, Ohio, $414,000 for mechanical trades. Imperial Heating and Cooling, Inc., from Solen, $43,950. Electrical trades, Higgins Electric Company in Elaria, $58,300. Plumbing trades, Sites Builders, Inc., from Broadview Heights, $78,700, for a total amount of $586,950.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions and deletions of Children's Services employees to utilize the Shell Oil Gasoline Credit Card, not to exceed 200, and the agency's MasterCard, not to exceed 2500 for the year 2005. The usage is to purchase gas, oil, and emergency motor vehicle repair for county-owned or leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Request the county auditor pursuant to or see Section 5705.03, certified of the Board of Commissioners, the total current tax valuation of Lorain County and the dollar amount of revenue that will be generated by a 1.5 mil replacement levy and a 1.5 mil renewal levy for the purpose of Lorain County Children's Services. This levy will be for a five-year period to be placed in 2005 ballot.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, point Ken Carney, Lorain County Sanitary Engineer, effective January 1, 2005, through December 31, 2009, with 30-day cancellation clause.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve a retirement incentive plan for Lorain County Engineers' Office. This is a two-year buyout with 10 employees that will be eligible at a cost of $764,261.57 at a savings fee office of approximately $737,182.10. Two employees will be replaced at a cost of $120,000, saving $617,182.10.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorize Lorain County Engineers to proceed by force account for normal and general maintenance and repair during the year 2004 on county roads for the safety of traveling public.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve Lorain County Annual Appropriation Budget for the year 2005.
I would move to approve the annual appropriation resolution for 2005, according to Exhibit B, with the following figures. General Fund, $70,405,809. And the grand total of all funds, $190,536,986. One second. Pardon me? $190,000, or is that million, John?
Yes, I believe. You're mistaken. You had indicated that was the total of all funds. The $190,536,986 would be for the total of all special revenue funds. Is that what your notes read?
Okay.
Not to be confused with the total of all funds, including the general fund.
Special revenue funds.
Correct.
Yeah, but I had the figures correct, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Yes, you did.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
And I second the motion.
Ms. Vacy?
Thanks, John.
With your discussion.
Because you don't want to discuss it, that's fine. Forget it. Go ahead.
Well, if we're going to discuss it, I'd like to give you credit for at least attempting or talking about and reviewing to reduce the sales tax. I think it took a lot of courage to do that, and I would implore that the new Commissioners look into it. And it may be possible, but I don't think with local government funds on the verge of possibly being taken away from the county that we should do it right now. But I do think in the future, the new board and Commissioner Blair should really review it.
I have one challenge. Four years before I took office, county government grew 25%. This budget, based on what is being passed today, means that county government grew 9% over four years. So my challenge to the new board, next four years, match it or beat it. That's all I have to say.
Any further discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator?
Oh, excuse me, Madam Clerk. If this is of the Commissioners, I believe that maybe there's some more discussion. The Commissioners might... Oh, you've got Commissioners' Report down here. Oh, I apologize.
It's Jimmy's turn.
Well, I thought she wasn't going to let us talk this morning. I know what I want to say. I apologize, Teresa. I should have known better.
Just briefly, this morning, I'd like to bid goodwill and God bless to the two Commissioners that are leaving. We've had our ups and downs and our excitements and trials and tribulations, but there's never been a moment of lack of excitement. And I wish you well for the future. It's been a pleasure serving with you and for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I'm sorry?
Assistant County Prosecutor?
No. I didn't know much about that. I have no report for that.
Commissioners' Report. Thank you, Teresa. Commissioner Vacy?
Ah, yes. I had some notes. I lost them. Anyway, I just want to thank the public and everyone that has ever voted for me for putting their trust in me as a first woman Lorain County Commissioner. Took a lot of guts for the people to vote for a woman in Lorain County, apparently, but I want to thank them for the honor to serve them. And apparently, as women, we do okay because now we have three women that have been elected from Lorain County as women county commissioners. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you, and may God bless you all. Happy holidays. And I want to thank the staff, all the elected officials, for working with me throughout these years. And like Jim said, we've had our ups and downs, but when there's change, there's always discussion and debate, which is good. It's not bad. We need it. We need more of it in Lorain County. And I appreciate having Commissioner Moore as a Commissioner because he's caused a lot of discussion, and which is good. We need discussion, and we need... And he's generated a lot of laughters out of the audience, too. But anyway, from the bottom of my heart, may God bless each and every one of your families and you through the new year and the years to come. And I want... Did I thank the staff?
Yeah.
You could thank them twice.
I will. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Commissioner Moore?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Gladys McIntosh, who's in the room today. She was my treasurer, kept me straight on the books. You know, we don't want any lawsuits over elections, over campaign finance reports, which seems to be in the paper lately. So thanks for keeping me out of the papers on that issue, Gladys, and putting up with me. Paula Gort is here today. I'd like to thank her for running the Commissioners' Office at my end. Basically, I don't think I would have succeeded too well if I didn't have her support here. My kids wanted to take the day off of school today to attend. They wanted to publicly thank me for not running for reelection. And I think most of the Democrats in the county wanted to do the same, so I'll save that. But I do... My wife wanted to attend, but I asked her and my children to stay home, go to school. They're going to have a couple weeks off, so my vacation starts as soon as I walk out of here. But most of all, I'd like to thank the citizens of Lorain County. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve you. I thought about writing a speech and all this other stuff, but let's face it, that just comes and goes. So I just want to thank you all. I'm not going to say goodbye, but I am going to say, "See you later."
May I say one more thing, please?
So that's it for my report.
Commissioner Blair? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I also want to thank all the board members, people that volunteer of their time to sit on boards. I think it's terrific, and I really appreciate them. And I want to thank Joe Rhodes, who's here, too, who's volunteered many, many times to come in and give tours of not only this building, the courthouses, the jail, and we've brought so many children and different groups into the buildings that would have never had tours of this building if it wasn't for Joe. And I really sincerely thank you for that, Joe. And thank you, Kathy, for all your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of the Lorain County Community Alliance, I have a small certificate here thanking both Commissioner Vacy and Commissioner Moore for your years of public service.
Thanks.
And in addition, I have this resolution from NOACA for Commissioner Moore. I carried it all the way home from Cleveland. It's a very nice piece, so... Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to old business now.
Is there old business from the Commissioner?
I do have one more thing. We did get the plaques from CCAO recognizing myself and Commissioner Moore, but they had our dates mixed up. They had my dates on Commissioner Moore's and his on mine, so we had to return them.
I would have kept it. It fell like 16 years here.
Anyway, I just wanted to let you know, that's why you have them gone. They'll probably mail them back.
You act like we gave you a hard time.
I told you, man.
I think we've...
I'm just the rose here.
Oh, no. Oh, and I do want to correct that one thing. You have erroneously made the statement. You are not the rose between two thorns. You are the thorn between two roses. Absolutely.
I had to get it in before you said it first, so you know.
Perker Bush.
Keep it clean. Keep it clean.
Well, there's been times we needed it.
Under old business.
I don't have any old business. I don't have any new business.
Number one.
There is an old business on the agenda. I guess she wanted to know... We've got to quit telling the clerk how to do her business because she wanted to know if we had any old business.
The one that I have noted, please, is the decision on the proposed vacation of Peaslee Road in Brownham Township.
I see that trustee, Dane Linebaugh, is here, and at the last meeting, we discussed Mr. Smith's concern about what Brownham Township was doing out there. And I think you were going to discuss it hopefully at your meeting on Monday evening.
I'm Dane Linebaugh, Chairman of the Board of Trustees of Brownham Township. Some time ago, the board was approached by David Miller, the property owner of the land either side of Peaslee Road as it intersects with Vermillion Road. And since the Ohio Department of Natural Resources had begun stocking the Vermillion River with a bunch of new fishes that hadn't been in the river, there have been lots and lots of fishermen basically using that piece of roadway as a parking lot. And in doing so, it blocked off access to a house that they own there. And since the road had been barricaded since the early 1960s, I began to look into whether or not the road had ever been vacated properly, which would allow Millers to basically prevent people from using that piece of the roadway as a parking lot, like they had been, tearing up the yard and so forth. And in the process, I discovered that it had not been vacated. So we initiated the process of vacating the piece of roadway that was no longer usable due to slips and erosion of the road surfaces and so forth. We went through the general process of doing this, and what we ended up with was reopening a section of the road that had been barricaded. And this then gave public access to a piece of the roadway that was adjacent to Mr. Smith's property, or well, he and his brother own a piece of property, a piece of property owned or well, he and his brother own a piece of property, a piece of property owned by Mr. Don Bechtel, and the Metro Parks. And the Metro Parks had actually planned to put a parking lot alongside this piece of road that we reopened and to allow fishermen access to the river valley. And in the process of this, Mr. Smith requested if we couldn't leave up the gate that was, had been previously barricading the road, but according to what Mr. Ennis had told us from the prosecutor's office, if the road is not vacated, it must be open to public access, which would require removing the gate that Mr. Smith would like to have left in place. So, we're in a situation where we just want to vacate the part of the road that's no longer usable, reopen the section that is still usable and had been barricaded since the early 1960s, and therein lies the conflict. Mr. Smith wanted to leave the gate in place, but by law, it's not allowed to do that unless the road has been vacated, which we don't want to vacate the whole road, just that one portion. So, there's where the township came from on this issue.
Okay. Thank you, Dane. The commissioners have any question or comment on that?
Ron, did this come before the board, the planning board?
I believe this went before the county planning commission some time ago, and the recommendation was to follow what is recommended at this point by the township trustees. But I do believe that this one did, and it was some time ago, not in the recent history.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
Mr. Smith?
Can I speak?
Yes, please come to the microphone.
And I have a couple pictures here that might add a little more insight, if you'd like to see them.
I was, I was unable to attend a viewing, so I'd like to see them.
This is the, as it currently stands, formal gate.
Did you see this, Betty? I think we did see this one.
You probably went the first time.
Yeah, the first time was so long ago.
Yes.
But you were going back to find a resolution, I thought, with the township trustees. Did you get that? Do you feel comfortable with vacating this, or?
I, I don't, no, I don't know anything about any resolution.
No, no, I mean.
And I don't feel comfortable vacating.
Okay, that's not, you have to go back.
Could you come to the microphone? Thank you, Shirley.
What about this land over here? What happens to that?
Well, that isn't the land in question.
No, I know, but is, do they have any resonant?
I guess I thought your question when you were at the last meeting was that you wanted to see that the gate stayed up.
I'd like the gate there. The gate has been there for forty years. And if, if by law, and, but I haven't seen the law, Mr. Ennis was gonna look something up, I guess. If by law, it's got to come down, well, it's got to come down. But it's been there for forty years.
Dane, I thought I heard Jerry need to weigh in on this. I thought I heard you say that if the road were vacated, then the gate could stay up.
Well, the portion of the road that.
Please come to the microphone. You're on candid camera.
The portion of the road that we wish to vacate is beyond the section that the gate is up now. In other words, there is a gate barring traffic from a portion of the road that we're not vacating. It's, it's not, it's against the law to bear, I don't know, against the law is the proper term, but you cannot vacate a road that denies access to property owners. Mr. Smith, Mr. Bechtel, and the Metro Parks have access to their property. The section of the road that we are gonna vacate is accessed, is abutted by the Metro Parks and by the Miller family, both of whom have agreed that it's all right for that section of the road to be, to be, to be vacated. Now, the gate that we wish to remove is blocking a part of the road that will not be vacated.
Okay. Jerry?
Section 2744.02 of the revised code requires governmental entities to keep their public roads free from obstructions. That includes barricades. As the commissioners, I think, are aware of, both townships and both, and the county board of commissioners are creatures of statute, which indicate that you only have those powers that are specifically provided for you or implied. The attorney general's office has ruled on a number of occasions that barricading a road is not an implied power of either the board of commissioners or the board of trustees. The attorney general's office has ruled that neither the board of commissioners or board of trustees has the authority to barricade a road, except for emergencies, like when you have to repair it or something like that. So, very clearly, neither the township nor the commissioners have the authority to barricade that road. And in fact, you have, the trustees have an affirmative duty to, to keep it open and free from obstruction. So, the barricades that have been, and I don't know why they have been there. I don't know the entire history of these being moved about, but the inquiry was made to this office, and there is no other ruling we can tell you, but that those barricades are, are not legal, and they have to come down, or whatever portion of the road where you want to leave the barricade up has to be vacated. So, the point Mr. Linebaugh is asking it to be vacated, from that point on, the road is in a point of disrepair. So, that is why they're seeking to have that section of it vacated, because it is no longer usable.
That's the back half here? Jerry, have you seen these, the back half, right?
I've been out there, and I'm very familiar.
It's been a long time since, I remember now, once I saw this, that it was out there. But it looks like there's two gates here. Here, this one is painted white, and this one here is like.
As I said, there's, there's gates all over the place there, and Mr. Smith is right. There has been a gate at the front of the road for some period of time, and that is simply not lawful to be there.
There's, there's approximately a three-eighths to a half-mile section of the road that is presently by the one gate with the stop sign on it that has denied access to the general public. That gate is the one we wish to remove. The gate that is painted white that you see there is blocking access to the Metro Parks parking lot that they have constructed on the east side of the, or the west side of the road, yes.
So, that's not a part of the road over here, then?
No, no, that's just.
Going that way, okay.
Parking lot, yeah.
So, I guess I'm hearing Jerry say that you need to take that gate down. Is that permissible?
And this is the one that Mr. Smith wishes to remain up.
Yeah, well, but it's not a question of, it's a question of the law.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, this is not, this isn't a gate, it's just some wires. It looks like with a stop sign in the middle of it. That's what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
What would you call it? Some wires with a stop sign in the middle. Well, that.
A gate sounds like something like this thing here with the cement barrier. That looks like, that's a gate. This is just some wires.
But I think this is the.
But the problem we have here is, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Miller, but.
What? He's not Mr. Smith. He's Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith. But if he, if we don't vacate the property, then this, it looks like this comes down.
It comes down anyway.
So.
It comes down regardless.
Well, I, I hate to drag this out, but I would have liked to have seen the law. I would like to read the law. I just don't see who has any standing to complain, because there are three parties involved, and it stood for forty years. And if none of the three parties are, are, find it a problem.
Right.
Who's, who has standing to complain?
The problem that would occur, commissioners, if some, somebody drives down that road through that illegal gate and drives off the road and is killed or injured or whatever, the township would be liable for that.
Well, that's another reason to keep it there. 'Cause that, that will, that for sure prevent anybody at night, 'cause my understanding, what the park said they were going to do is that they have someone come out, and I'm not sure if this is actually happening.
Now, I'll help you out here. I think what they're saying is that with that barricade up, someone could get hurt, and then the township would be liable. Because, because they're saying, not what we're hearing today, is that that's an illegal gate. Is that right, Jerry?
I don't understand how they're gonna get hurt.
Well, the thing is that by law, you just can't block a street for no reason.
But it's been up there for forty years.
I don't know what the grandfather law is, but I would think it was, the law was probably there for forty years too. But I don't see how you can legally block a street without an emergency.
I, 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 well, it worked for forty years, and I'd like to, as I say, I'd like to read this, but.
If it be vacated, then you could keep it up, 'cause it's no longer a public road.
Well, they are gonna vacate that.
No, it would still have to be moved, because the vacated part is further down. Am I correct?
That's correct.
But he could put up his own gate.
Commissioner, the realization is that the road belongs to the public. It doesn't belong to Mr. Miller, and that's where the issue comes in. It's a, Mr. Smith, it's a public road that, that he has contiguous property to, but the road belongs to the public, and he cannot place a barricade across a public thoroughfare and limit the public's right, even if it's only a thousand feet, to go down that thousand feet of road.
But the, the park is public property too, and they can prohibit people from?
The roads are different than the Metro Parks. Metro Parks.
Well, in this case, if it were a, if you could go from, from Portland Road to Vermillion Road, that's, you can't argue against that. But you can't go anywhere on Peaslee Road.
But there's a lot of public roads that, that deadend or don't, don't continue on past a certain point. You cannot say that we're gonna put a barricade. It'd be, it'd be like taking a cul-de-sac and putting a gate in front of it. And once the road was designated a public road, you simply can't do that. The road belongs to the public. I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, but that, that's the law.
Well, yeah, as I say, I would like to read it and to see if there isn't an exception, because of course, there are, you know, there are equities here. And, and I'm concerned now that if that's open, people are gonna go back there. They're gonna dump trash. They're gonna make trouble, just as that, I assume that's why the park closes their property, because otherwise, people will go there, they'll make trash, they'll have parties, they'll do all sorts of deleterious things.
They want it closed.
And that's why I think it ought to be closed. If it were closed twenty-four hours a day, that would be another matter. But the park says they come down every morning and supposed to open the gate, which they haven't done. And every evening, they're supposed to come down and close the gate, which they haven't done. At least their little gate.
Well, regardless of what this board does, I'm understand, Dane, that township is gonna remove that stop sign and that wire that.
That's, that's what we are required to do. That's what we are required to do, simply because that section of the road will not be vacated.
So, you're going to, to take that down regardless of what we do? Okay, so that, that's, that's gonna come down. So, I think the other issue is, do we want to vacate the portion of the road that the Brownham Township trustees have asked us to vacate to resolve another problem? And I just want to remind the board that we've already taken action on this once, but because of a technicality, we sought to redo the action.
Commissioner, one thing, when the barricade comes down, there's no bridge. And my understanding is a bridge out further down the road. So, the township can't take that barricade out without vacating that road to be able to legally barricade it at some point, so people won't drive down it and drop into the river. So, you know, you got, you got a, you got a bit of a catch-22 going here.
Yeah.
So, I just want to remind you that the road is not navigable the way it is.
Dane?
The township is prepared to place another barricade at the formal point of vacation. That's, that, the barricade that is up there now has been left in place until the formal vacation process was completed, at which point then the township will remove that barricade or that cable with the stop sign on it and place a formal barricade at the far end. At the same time, the park, where the township has been working with the park, because they want to retain access for all-terrain vehicles of their own to get down to the river valley in the case of emergency situations to remove anybody from the river valley, should that become necessary.
You'll be, you'll be placing a legal barricade.
Yes.
Because the road's been vacated. That's the difference between the one that's there now.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the legal barricade will go at the point of vacation, which is beyond the Smith property and the Smith, Bechtel, and part of the Metro Parks property, yeah.
I move the vacation be approved as submitted.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes. It was my understanding that Dan Martin, he was here last time, didn't care one way or the other on how this ended up.
Well, that, that's because the park has access to their property, where they've put their parking lot, and the part of the property that is beyond the formal point of vacation is still accessible from the, the area where the parking area is. So, they, they do have, still have access to their property. It's just the rest of the road that is impassable now, they don't need access to beyond their all-terrain vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussions? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Any new business for the board?
I have none.
I have none.
I have one. There's a lot of talk lately regarding ferry service to the islands out of Lorraine. Just an idea for the next board. Sandusky is in the process of using their transit funds in order to do that. If that is the case, then I would suggest maybe this board working with the port authority, or maybe see if you can work something out with not only the ferry service, but there's a lot of interest coming next year regarding flight service out of the Lorraine County Airport to the islands. And so, if there is a discussion regarding the ferry service to the islands, and if we can beat Sandusky to their punch of using transit funds, which they are aggressively pursuing, I would like to see the next board at least pursue that as an option and include the airport, because the airport, since it has been privatized, is heavily seeking charter service to the islands. And I think that would be something to tie in with the city of Lorraine with their ideas of what they're doing and the county. So, that was just something I had written down in their commissioners' report. I just forgot to do it and bring it up, so. There was so much love in the room, I kinda, kinda caught up in it, so. But if you don't mind, if you do have any discussions regarding that on, on this level, I'd hope you'd appreciate, or at least consider the airport and using transit funds to work something out. That's all I.
What transit funds are you talking about?
Well, I don't know. That's what I'm saying. It's something that they're working on. I'm just saying.
Well, that's what I wondered, what transit funds. You talked like transit had funds, and I wondered if you meant local.
Federal and state, no, federal and state money, so. Just give you a little head, heads up. That's all.
Gave us a little homework.
Well, yeah, you know how that is.
Yeah, right.
Under number one, I did receive a petition to vacate an existing fifteen-inch, fifteen-foot alley in original. Number five, the Newberry Track in Malarri Township. I will be forwarding that to the engineer, so we don't have to do anything on that today. On number two, though, I need, we're gonna receive and accept the petition to annex two parcels for a total of nine point nine eight eight acres from Pittsfield Township to the city of Oberlin. Attorney James N. Taylor is the agent. The public hearing is scheduled for Thursday. It was February 24th, but he called me this morning once to change to March 3rd. Two thousand and five at ten fifteen AM, and this will be a regular annexation, and I need the board to move on that.
We have to move that we've received.
Any accepting, correct?
Second.
Also, discussion.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under board correspondence.
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Public comment?
No.
No.
No?
Mike Chandler.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait, twenty-five minutes.
Mike Challenger from the Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce. I didn't pay attention.
Yeah, would you like to join us? Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Mike.
Happy holidays to you.
Thank you.
On behalf of our innovative project, I'd like to bring up Rocco Fanna from the North Coast Building Industry Association, Jerry Pavlik from Lorraine County Joint Vocational School, Dan Bellman from the Solid Waste District. Dan Martin could not attend today, but he was also a participant in the Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce. The commissioners, last year, provided one hundred thousand dollars to this group to build a home that was made out of recycled building materials and made with super-energy-efficient heating and cooling equipment. The home did sell before it was completed, and as such, we, we have some pictures here that we'd like to present to the commissioners. We'll make a poster of this. We also have a certificate of appreciation that we'll provide to each of you. This was a great product, project, because the JVS students actually designed the house one year, and then the next year, the students actually built the house with the assistance of the Building Industries Association. And we'd like to thank you, and hopefully, when the new commissioners come on board, we can do other innovative projects like this.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
Was that the hundred thousand that we loaned them and they paid back?
Yes.
So, that was great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, it's very nice of you to. It's very nice of you all to take your time and come. It was a wonderful project. Thanks to Dan Bellman for his leadership in that. Getting it off the ground takes a lot of cooperation from many people to make something like that happen, and I think we were unique in Lorraine County in putting a project like that together. And I think it would be wonderful if we could do some more stuff like that. Really wonderful. Okay, now it's time for public comment, right, Teresa? Can we do that now?
You may do that.
Okay. We've got a big audience today. Come on, Shirley. Shirley, if you've got something to say.
Shirley R. Johnson Oberlin. Well, I hadn't really decided to do this, and now I'm kind of caught off guard. I do want to thank Mary Jo, I've been coming to the Lorraine Commissioners' meeting since, I think, about ninety-seven. I, or ninety-nine, I can't remember which. And it's been at least seven years, you can do the arithmetic. And I want to particularly thank Mary Jo Vacy, because she was the first one of the commissioners to welcome our requests and our efforts along open meetings and open documents in that area. I also, and she was always very helpful and cooperative in our efforts to see that those kinds of things were done above and beyond what the sunshine law requires. I also want to thank the rest of the commissioners for being, for, for joining in and, and following suit. And I, I think Mr. Moore should be thanked particularly for his warm, but extra-warm welcome to Mr. Kish when he was still here. Thank you.
John Hunter out of Sheffield Village in UAW. Has come here today to let Mary Jo Vacy know that Labor appreciates the job that she's done for the citizens of Lorraine County over the past years in her service. job that she's done for the citizens of Lorraine County over the past years in her service. And without her strong fortitude and standing strong for Labor in Lorraine County, Lorraine County would not be growing. Uh, I appreciate the efforts that she's made and I just wanted to come here this morning to thank her on behalf of Labor of Lorraine County.
Thank you, thank you, John.
My name is Bert Lacrosse from Lurio. I'd like to give a rose to each of the Commissioners on our outgoing last meeting. Mary Jo, you're the ex-checker of the checker. You wash the purse strings. David, you're a lightning rod. But a stand-up guy, I want to thank you for standing up and taking the heat. They labeled you a lame duck, but one thing they can't say, you were a dead duck. That burns us to Betty. She's coming back. She's gonna take the helm and I do hope that the two incoming Commissioners listen to your expertise because you're gonna be the rudder and you're gonna lead this county into the future. Good luck. Thank you all. Bon voyage to the two Commissioners. Betty, see you next year.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I move to adjourn?
You can, yeah. I'm, I'm not...
I would like, second. I would like to thank Elizabeth and Shirley and her...
You have to have a second.
It's, be still.
Due to lack of a second, it's...
Last motion dies for the last...
Even if it's adjourned, man.
I want to thank Shirley, Elizabeth, and, and Mr. Johnson for attending all these years and, and you too, Dave. Thank you very much and all the people that have attended these meetings and, and yourself too, Bert. It, it's just great, Kathy, uh, for attending. It's good to see people in the audience. Thanks again.
Okay, no one else wants to talk this morning? I move we adjourn.
Will that Commissioner Moore make that?
Nope.
I want to stay. Okay. You want to talk, David?
Well, I made my motion.
Well, we'll just stay then.
I still don't have a second.
Okay, I'll second it.
I think it's more appropriate that mine dies for, like, say, my last thing I did, so.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Why?
See the laughter you bring?
Well, I haven't made my decision yet.
And it isn't even Christmas yet.
This is the last big decision I'm gonna make up here.
Oh, wow.
I guess I.
I thought maybe you were gonna go there.
No.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at nine thirty at the Lorraine County Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Lary. These are public meetings and as always, you are invited to attend.
We've all heard the gruesome statistics concerning child abuse. Maybe you've dismissed them and convinced yourself there's nothing you can do to help. Truth is, you can help. Voices for Children can make you an advocate to a child in Lorraine County who desperately needs your help. Make the time to make a difference. Call Voices for Children today and find out how you can become part of the solution in speaking up for an abused child. We need your help.
Grass clippings, food scraps, garden remains, leaves, all have one thing in common. They can all be composted. All these things will go back to nature using only air and water. Nature will recycle these and numerous other items back into rich soil to benefit your garden or shrubs. Turn it on the ground or tumble it in special drums. Composting saves landfill space and can save you money. Composting can turn into a fun project for the entire family.
Unsightly litter is often the result of well-intentioned people like you and me being careless at the curb, around business areas, and at work sites. Lucky the ladybug, Ohio's First Lady of Litter Prevention, says, "Nobody wants to live or work around trash." Litter lowers property values and it's costly to clean up.
Keep Lorraine County beautiful. Put the lid on trash.
Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Congratulations to the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, the CIC met at 8:30, and they have a recommendation for an application from Perry Fiberglass Products Incorporated for a $200,000 loan, 15 years, and a 2.65 percent. Rebecca, are you going to report to us their recommendation or demand?
Rebecca Jones, Lorraine County Community Development Department. Brian Barker of our department has been working with Mr. Pulliam of Perry Fiberglass for about the last 18 months. Mr. Pulliam called us in response to one of our radio ads, and so we were very excited that we've been able to bring this project to fruition. The company is asking for a $200,000 loan. It is a $541,000 project. They will be creating 15 new jobs and doubling the size of their facility from 10,000 square foot to 20,000 square foot. And they anticipate to have construction started within the next two to three months, hopefully. It may be a little sooner if all this gets through the state quickly and rapidly. Mr. Pulliam is here from Perry Fiberglass and is more than willing to answer any questions or could give a brief presentation to the Commissioners if you so wish.
Mr. Pulliam, do you have comments to the board other than the Merry Christmas that you gave earlier?
For those who missed the Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas to everyone. We are a company that manufactures fiberglass reinforced plastic duct. We have been in business for 20 years. Just a little over a year ago, we relocated our offices from West Lake, Ohio to Avon Lake, Ohio. We're located on Pin Oak Parkway. Part of this move was brought about by our changing our approach. Up until a little over a year ago, we had used third-party sources to manufacture all of our products. We had decided to take on the manufacturing ourselves. We located a property in Avon Lake on Pin Oak that sufficed for our immediate needs to get started. However, we knew going in that with the growth that we were experiencing and taking over some of the manufacturing ourselves, that we would in fact need to expand that facility. The original phase, we self-financed and took on ourselves. To do the expansion, we need some help, and therefore, we approached the county. And the county development group have been very helpful and instrumental in getting us here. In doing so, we moved into Lorraine County with three jobs. We immediately took it to five. We have now 15 employees. So we've gone from three to 15 in the period of a year. We would expect, over the course of the next three years, to double that again. And to date, all of our employees, except one, are in fact Lorraine County residents.
Any questions?
None here.
I move that we approve the recommendation of the CIC.
Second.
Further discussion?
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
At 10:00 AM, Michael Chandler from Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce and the Innovative Partnership in Lorraine County would like to make a presentation to the board on providing a zero-interest loan to construct the dream house. At 3:00 PM, the County Planning Commission will be meeting here. Under resolutions, job and family services bills?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Investments?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Appropriations? Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Transfers?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Advances and repayments? Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Requisitions?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye, with the exception of 21, 22.
Travel expenses?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Bills? Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated in the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners?
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye, with the exception of number seven.
Award bid to Expideks in the amount of $105,370.59 for the copy paper, envelopes, and various paper products. From the Administration Building in Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, bids were open on November 29, 2004, and will be effective January 1, 2005, through December 31, 2005.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Authorize the salaries for Lorraine and Larry Municipal Courts, effective January 1, 2005, reflecting the county's two-fifth share. Larry Judge Lisa Latgrace, which is going to be the presiding administrative judge, biweekly rate will be from $950 to $973, $973.08. Larry Judge John Munson, biweekly rate from $973.07 to $950. Larry Clerk of Court Donald Rothgary, biweekly rate from $1,372.42 to $1,405.12. Lorraine Clerk of Court Stephen Bannstick, biweekly rate from $1,372.42 to $1,405.12.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Approve an interned contract with Ohio Edison Company for the Efficiency, Safety, Innovative Program, effective January 1, 2005, expiring December 31, 2008. This contract is for all mercury, high-pressured sodium, or metal halate energy-efficient streetlights.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Under Children and Families, reject bids open on December 6, 2004, and instruct the clerk to re-advertize requests for proposals for Lorraine County Children and Families Council bedding materials. This notice will be published in the Morning Journal on December 21 and 28, and bids will be open at 2:00 PM on January 4, 2005, in the Commissioners' Public hearing room.
Some move.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, what happened with the rebid? One?
We only received one proposal, and there was some problems with the bid specification, so it's just going back out so we can get more competitive bids with better specifications.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Under the Community Development Department, appoint and reappoint various members of Lorraine County Economic and Industrial Development Corporation. Appoint filling terms effective January 1, 200... That should be five. December 31, 2006. Laura Kukowski, Commissioner-elect, replacing Commissioner Mary Jo Vacy. Ted Kallo, Commissioner-elect, replacing Commissioner David J. Moore. Dennis Will, Prosecutor-elect, replacing Prosecutor Gary Bennett. John Palazza, Lorraine County Airport, replacing Dan Abbold. Their alternate is Mike Barth. Repoint effective January 1, 2004, through December 31, 2007. Commissioner Blair, Auditor Mark Stewart, County Administrator Mr. Cortez, Patrick McAllen Doyle from Lorraine County Chamber, Tom Ryan Retiree, and Ronald Leftwining, Director of Community Development Department.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Authorize an extension of time to R.A. Joseph Construction, Inc., Avon, Ohio, for the Columbia Township Elevator Project to May 15, 2005.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve an interned software maintenance agreement for project accounting for contract system for the period of February 1, 2005, through December 31, 2005, at a cost of $1,588 to be paid from account 205010903 for 50101 contract services.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Approve an interned agreement with Horizons Activity Center, North Homestead, Ohio, in the amount not to exceed $500,000 to provide an after-school program to children ages 5 through 14, effective January 1, 2005, through June 30, 2005.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Under the Transit, authorize the filing of applications with ODOT for FY05 Transportation Assistance Grants. These grants include the Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Care Assistance Program and the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Under CBCF, award various contracts for the additions and alterations to Lorraine Medina Community Base Correctional Facility project. Bids were opened on October 21, and these were the lowest and most responsive complying with specifications. The contract award is contingent upon approval by the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections. When funds became available, they will place in account 203025401440701. An issued notice to proceed letters will be effective on or before January 3, 2005, and to complete site contract on or before June 1, 2005. Authorize County Administrator and effective County Auditor to release retainage at completion of the project. For general trades, bid was Sites Builders, Inc., Broadview Heights, Ohio, $414,000. For mechanical trades, Imperial Heating and Cooling, Inc., from Solon, $43,950. Electrical trades, Higgins Electric Company in Elaria, $58,300. Plumbing trades, Sites Builders, Inc., from Broadview Heights, $78,700, for a total amount of $586,950.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions and deletions of Children's Services employees to utilize the Shell Oil Gasoline Credit Card not to exceed 200, and the agency's MasterCard not to exceed 2500 for the year 2005, the usages to purchase gas, oil, and emergency motor vehicle repair for county-owned or leased vehicles.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Request to County Auditor pursuant to ORC Section 5705.03, certified of the Board of Commissioners, the total current tax valuation of Lorraine County and the dollar amount of revenue that will be generated by a 1.5 mil replacement levy and a 1.5 mil renewal levy for the purpose of Lorraine County Children's Services. This levy will be for a five-year period to be placed in 2005 ballot.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Under the Engineer, appoint Ken Carney, Lorraine County Sanitary Engineer, effective January 1, 2005, through December 31, 2009, with 30-day cancellation clause.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Approve a retirement incentive plan for Lorraine County Engineers' Office. This is a two-year buyout with 10 employees that will be eligible at a cost of $764,261.57 at a savings fee office of approximately $737,182.10. Two employees will be replaced at a cost of $120,000, saving $672,182.10.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Offer our Lorraine County Engineer to proceed by course account for normal and general maintenance and repair during the year 2004 and county reports for the safety of traveling public.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Approve Lorraine County Annual Appropriation Budget for the year 2005.
I would move to approve the annual appropriation resolution for 2005, according to Exhibit B, with the following figures. General fund, $70,405,809. And the grand total of all funds, $190,536,986.
Second.
Pardon me? $190,000, or is that million, John?
Yeah, I believe, if you're mistaken, you had confused that was the total of all funds. The $190,536,986 would be for the total of all special revenue funds. Is that what your notes read? Not to be confused with the total of all funds, including the general funds.
Special revenue funds.
Correct.
Yeah, but I had the figures correct, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Yes, you did.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
And I second in the motion.
Ms. Vacy.
Thanks, John. Well, if we're going to discuss it, I'd like to give you credit for at least attempting or talking about and reviewing to reduce the sales tax. I think it took a lot of courage to do that, and I would implore that the new Commissioners look into it. And it may be possible, but I don't think with local government funds on the verge of possibly being taken away from the county that we should do it right now. But I do think in the future, the new board and Commissioner Blair should really review it.
Well, I have one challenge. Four years before I took office, county government grew 25 percent. This budget, based on what is being passed today, means that county government grew 9 percent over four years. So my challenge to the new board, the next four years, match it or beat it. That's all I have to say.
Any further discussion? Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
No.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator?
Uh, excuse me, Madam Clerk. If this is the Commissioners, I believe that maybe there's some more discussion. The Commissioners might... Oh, you've got Commissioners' Report down here. Oh, I apologize.
It's Jimmy's turn.
Well, I thought she wasn't going to let us talk this morning. I apologize, Teresa. I should have known better.
Just briefly, this morning, I'd like to bid goodwill and God bless to the two Commissioners that are leaving. We've had our ups and downs and our excitements and trials and tribulations, but there's never been a moment of lack of excitement. And I wish you well in the future. It's been a pleasure serving with you and for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Sorry?
Assistant County Prosecutor?
I have no report.
Commissioners' Report.
Thank you, Teresa. Commissioner Vacy?
Uh, yes. I had some notes, I lost them. Anyway, I just want to thank the public and everyone that has ever voted for me for putting their trust in me as a first woman Lorraine County Commissioner. Took a lot of guts for the people to vote for a woman in Lorraine County, apparently, but I want to thank them for the honor to serve them. And apparently, as women, we do okay because now we have three women that have been elected from Lorraine County as women county commissioners. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you, and may God bless you all. Happy holidays. And I want to thank the staff, all the elected officials, for working with me throughout these years. And like Jim said, we've had our ups and downs, but when there's change, there's always discussion and debate, which is good. It's not bad, but we need it, and we need more of it in Lorraine County. And I appreciate having Commissioner Moore as a Commissioner because he's caused a lot of discussion, and which is good. We need discussion, and we need... And he's generated a lot of laughters out of the audience, too. But anyway, from the bottom of my heart, may God bless each and every one of your families and you through the new year and years to come. And I want... Did I thank the staff?
Yeah.
You could thank them twice.
I will. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Commissioner Moore?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Gladys McIntosh, who's in the room today. She was my treasurer, kept me straight on the books. You know, we don't want any lawsuits over elections, over campaign finance reports, which seems to be in the paper lately. So thanks for keeping me out of the papers on that issue, Gladys, and putting up with me. Paula Gord is here today. I'd like to thank her for running the Commissioners' Office at my end. Basically, I don't think I would have succeeded too well if I didn't have her support here. My kids wanted to take the day off of school today to attend. They wanted to publicly thank me for not running for reelection. And I think most of the Democrats in the county wanted to do the same, so I'll save that. But I do, my wife wanted to attend, but I asked her and my children to stay home, go to school. They're going to have a couple of weeks off, so my vacation starts as soon as I walk out of here. But most of all, I'd like to thank the citizens of Lorraine County. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve you. I thought about writing a speech and all this other stuff, but let's face it, that just comes and goes. So I just want to thank you all. I'm not going to say goodbye, but I am going to say, "See you later."
May I say one more thing, please?
So that's it for my report.
Commissioner Blair. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I also want to thank all the board members, people that volunteer of their time to sit on boards. I think it's terrific, and I really appreciate them. And I want to thank Joe Rhodes, who's here, too, who's volunteered many, many times to come in and give tours of not only this building, the courthouses, the jail. And we've brought so many children and different groups into the buildings that would have never had tours of this building if it wasn't for Joe. And I really sincerely thank you for that, Joe. And thank you, Kathy, for all your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of the Lorraine County Community Alliance, I have a small certificate here thanking both Commissioner Vacy and Commissioner Moore for your years of public service.
Thanks.
And in addition, I have this resolution from Noaka for Commissioner Moore. I carried it all the way home from Cleveland. It's a very nice piece, so. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to old business now.
Is there old business from the Commissioner?
I do have one more thing. We did get the plaques from CCAO recognizing myself and Commissioner Moore, but they had our dates mixed up. They had my dates on Commissioner Moore's and his online, so we had to return them.
I would have kept it, it fell like 16 years here.
Anyway, I just wanted to let you know, that's why you haven't got it. They'll probably mail them back.
You act like we gave you a hard time.
I told you, man. I'm just the rose here.
I do want to correct that one thing. You have erroneously made this statement. You are not the rose between two thorns. You are the thorn between two roses. Absolutely.
I had to get it in before you said it first.
Perker Bush.
Keep it clean. Keep it clean.
Well, there's been times we needed it.
Under old business.
I don't have any new business. There is an old business on me, Jen. I guess she wanted to know. We've got to quit telling the clerk how to do her business because she wanted to know if we had any old business.
The one that I have noted, please, is the decision on the proposed vacation of Peaslee Road and Brownham Township.
I see that trustee, Dane Linebaugh, is here. And at the last meeting, we discussed Mr. Smith's concern about what Brownham Township was doing out there. And I think you were going to discuss it, hopefully, at your meeting on Monday evening.
Dane Linebaugh, Chairman of the Board of Trustees of Brownham Township. Some time ago, the board was approached by David Miller, the property owner of the land either side of Peaslee Road as it intersects with Vermillion Road. And since the Ohio Department of Natural Resources had begun stocking the Vermillion River with a bunch of new fishes that hadn't been in the river, there have been lots and lots of fishermen basically using that piece of roadway as a parking lot. And in doing so, it blocked off access to a house that they own there. And since the road had been barricaded since the early 1960s, I began to look into whether or not the road had ever been vacated properly, which would allow Millers to basically prevent people from using that piece of the roadway as a parking lot, like they had been, and tearing up the yard and so forth. And in the process, I discovered that it had not been vacated. So we initiated the process of vacating the piece of roadway that was no longer usable due to slips and erosion of the road surfaces and so forth. We went through the general process of doing this, and what we ended up with was reopening a section of the road that had been barricaded. And this then gave public access to a piece of the roadway that was adjacent to Mr. Smith's property, or well, he and his brother own a piece of property, a piece of property owned by Mr. Don Bechtel, and the Metro Parks. And the Metro Parks had actually planned to put a parking lot alongside this piece of road that we reopened and to allow fishermen access to the river valley. And in the process of this, Mr. Smith requested if we couldn't leave up the gate that was, had been previously barricading the road. But according to what Mr. Ennis had told us from the prosecutor's office, if the road is not vacated, it must be open to public access, which would require removing the gate that Mr. Smith would like to have left in place. So we're in a situation where we just want to vacate the part of the road that's no longer usable, reopen the section that is still usable and had been barricaded since the early 1960s, and therein lies the conflict. Mr. Smith wanted to leave the gate in place, but by law, it's not allowed to do that unless the road has been vacated, which we don't want to vacate the whole road, just that one portion. So there's where the township came from on this issue.
Okay, thank you, Dane. The Commissioners have any question or comment on that?
Ron, did this come before the board, the planning board?
I believe this went before the County Planning Commission some time ago, and the recommendation was to follow what is recommended at this point by the township trustees. But I do believe that this one did, and it was some time ago, not in the recent history.
Thanks, Ron.
Mr. Smith?
Can I speak?
Yes, please come to the microphone.
Can I have a couple of pictures here that might add a little more insight, if you'd like to see them?
I was unable to attend the viewing, so I'd like to see them. Did you see this, Betty?
I think we did see this one. You probably went the first time.
Yeah, the first time. Yeah, the first time, it was so long ago.
Yes.
But you were going back to find a resolution, I thought, with the Township Trustees. Did you get that? Do you feel comfortable with vacating this, or?
I, I don't, no, I don't know about any resolution.
No, I mean.
And I don't feel comfortable vacating.
Okay, that's what, you have to go back.
Could you come to the microphone? Thank you, Shirley.
What about this land over here, what happens to that?
Well, that isn't the landed question.
No, I know, but do they have egress?
I guess, I thought your question when you were at the last meeting was that you wanted to see that the gate stayed up.
I'd like the gate there. The gate has been there for 40 years, and if, if by law, and, but I haven't seen the law, Mr. Ennis was going to look something up, I guess, if by law it's got to come down, well, it's got to come down, but it's been there for 40 years.
Dane, I thought I heard you, Jerry, you need to weigh in on this. I thought I heard you say that if the road were vacated, then the gate could stay up.
Well, the portion of the road that...
Please come to the microphone. You're on candid camera.
The portion of the road that we wish to vacate is beyond the section that the gate is up now. In other words, there is a gate barring traffic from a portion of the road that we're not vacating. It's, it's not, it's against the law to bear, I don't know, against the law is the proper term, but you cannot vacate a road that denies access to property owners. Mr. Smith, Mr. Bechtel, and the Metro Parks have access to their property. The section of the road that we are going to vacate is accessed, is abutted by the Metro Parks and by the Miller family, both of whom have agreed that it's all right for that section of the road to be, to be, to be vacated. Now, the gate that we wish to remove is blocking a part of the road that will not be vacated.
Okay.[1601.73]